All right, welcome to the Monday. Good evening. Can you all hear me? Welcome to the Monday, February 4th, 2019 work session of the Falls Church City Council. We are delighted you all are here with us this evening. Why don't we go ahead and get started? Mr. Shields, do you want to introduce the first item? Or do you have anything you'd like to say before you?
Well, I would like to, but Carrie has... Where did Carrie go? Oh, okay. She will be right back. So if we could have just a little bit of a delay. But what the first item is, is an agreement with Virginia Department of Rail and Public Transportation concerning capital funding for Womata. And in many respects, there's been a lot of coverage of Womata issues as we've been getting ready for budget. And this is related to that, but it's... This is kind of not the core negotiation we're having with Womata over their budget, which was reported in the news press this week. That issue is about their operating budget and maintaining discipline in operating budgets that follows the agreement that Virginia... The Virginia General Assembly laid out last year with the increase in funding of $150 million for Washington capital. But with all things Womata, I think, you know, things do get interrelated. But let me... With Carrie here, if we could hear a briefing from her just on the... What this agreement does and its purpose, and then get questions and comments. The request is for council consideration at this... At your next meeting on February 11th.
Hi, I'm Carrie Odenino. Thank you, Mayor Tarter, and members of council for the opportunity to speak tonight. As Wyatt said, no formal action... Council action is requested at this time. Instead, staff is recommending that council review the DRPT locality agreement and resolution and schedule action for the February 11th meeting. So before you... And attachment one is the agreement by and between the Virginia Department of Rail and Public Transportation and the City of Falls Church concerning payment of funding for the city's proportionate share of capital funding for the Washington Metropolitan Area Transit Authority Capital Fund. The city share is anticipated to be $255,000 per year in FY 2019 and FY 2020, and an estimated $230,000 in FY 2021, and annually, once Loudoun County is included in the capital allocation. So for background, in 2018, the Virginia General Assembly approved dedicated capital funding for Womata, beginning in fiscal year 2019. This resulted in the District of Columbia and Maryland also providing necessary dedicated funding, and Virginia fulfilling its commitments per the Womata Compact. The Womata Capital Fund was created at the state level to collect these funds, to be administered by DRPT. A portion of the dedicated capital funding, 27.12 million, is to be collected from Virginia member jurisdictions of Womata. So these local funds may be paid for with a jurisdiction share of the 30% local transportation taxes, which are administered through the Northern Virginia Transportation Authority, or may be appropriated by the jurisdiction from other local funds. And each locality's share of the 27.12 million is calculated based on the percentage of the locality's share of the annual Womata Capital Improvement Program for all local governments in Virginia. As the Womata Capital Fund is a new fund, execution of an agreement between DRPT and localities is required before payment can begin. So the agreement outlines the requirements and responsibilities of both DRPT and local jurisdictions regarding payment of the local funds. So again, in terms of fiscal impact, the city share is anticipated to be 255,000 per year in fiscal year 2019, 2020, and to drop down to 230,000 in FY 2021, once Loudoun County is included in the capital allocation. So I'm happy to take any questions about the agreement or the staff report.
All right. Thank you very much for that fine report. Before we get any questions, Mr. Snyder's been actively involved in all things transit, and I thought maybe you have any insight to share with us before we get started in our conversation?
And Mayor, if I could just add a little bit, I think, Carrie, for the presentation and taking the lead on the staff report. This is actually something that the localities asked for, because with the state code, we have to transmit the money to DRPT. But there was nothing in writing that was executing that and/or ensuring that our money went to Womata, so we felt this is very important. So regardless of our challenges on budgets, our concern about the state code and the using of our funding, and/or what might be changing, this is really important for documenting and ensuring compliance and protecting the city's resources. This has been fully reviewed by finance and Carroll as well for legal conformity for what we would want. So it was negotiated with the Northern Virginia Localities, DRPT program staff, and then legal and finance. For the city's share, how we transmit that, 255,000 is in the adopted budget and will be in the next budget. As part of your CIP, we use a mix of the CIE funding and 30% to meet our obligations. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Thank you very much. Any questions or comments? Ms. Hardy?
Thank you. I just wanted to know what our historical run rate is. So we're at 255 for this year and next year. What has it been so far per year for capital?
This is our... Only our second year of doing this allocation this way through the state code change. So 255,000 is what we've had last... This year will be the first year, 20 will be the second year. So there's no historical data for this particular component. We are seeing, you know, in total, operating in Womata, you're over 3 million, and we're seeing a 500,000 increase in their proposed budget. But this is a small portion newly executed.
Got it. And similar to the operating expense, which I guess there was an informal or formal agreement on the 3% growth, is there something similar for capital growth expenses as well?
The whole funding allocation was supposed to stay within that 3%. And so when this money got shifted and our local share for capital was going, there was the commitment, and it is in the state code, to control 3% operating costs. However, also in the state code are allowable exceptions. So Womata can increase above 3% for any cooperative agreement, competitive agreement, union salary negotiations, new initiative, expanded hours, and capital. So we will need to do some regional work, compact work, to get it within the 3%.
So the... This capital... Our share of this capital funding should fall within the 3% growth?
It should.
But it doesn't currently?
The current budget for Womata capital and operating would have an increased cost for the city ranging from 3.5% to 11.8%.
And does that come from higher operating or higher this capital bill essentially?
It's both, but predominantly on the operating side because of their salary and proposed increased hours. But they do have increased capital as well.
Because I guess if we are supposed to authorize Wyatt to proceed with this, if we have issues with that 3% growth number not staying within it, I don't know whether we should make note of that in this resolution.
You have submitted a formal letter and part of the testimony as part of the Womata budget, and Mr. Snyder spoke for testimony. It wouldn't hurt, I guess, but in terms of the state code, this is going to happen regardless of their budget. We are certainly working with them to, of their three scenarios, not be at the high one.
I'll defer to Mr. Snyder and staff on whether we should reiterate that point, but I just thought I'd ask, because I know we've had issues with it. And if this is for capital funding and we're having trouble staying within that 3% number for both capital and operating, I thought we should mention that again. Thank you.
All right. Vice Mayor Connolly?
Just a question, Carrie, about the amount, $255,000. And you said that's being split between the 30% local money and then our true local money. So what is the effect going to be actually on our budget? If it's not all coming out of the taxpayer part of the budget?
Correct. Let me take that.
Go ahead, yeah.
So for FY 19, it is a split of CIE and 30%, and I don't have those exact dollar amount with me. But it's... For this share, it's close to a 50/50, but that's not an exact piece. So it does impact in total the local taxpayers because of the full Womata requirements. We are predominantly using 30% here, and your CIE, which draws down your 30%, matches it.
And can we assume that proportion will be for the next four years?
No, because in the proposed CIP that we're working on right now that I'm presenting to the Planning Commission tonight, we're trying to maximize the 30% and CIE in a way that we can still have Pago and other resources to program. So we're actually moving some stuff around. The obligation stays the same, but the funding sources may shift some.
Okay. Thanks.
All right. Anything else? If not, thank you very much for your work, and I know there's more to do. We appreciate both of your all. Mr. Snyder?
Just one more thing. The hearing in DC was postponed for a week last week, and I'll be testifying tomorrow in opposition to anything over 3%. So... And presenting the letter that you all approved for the mayor to send in. So we'll keep hammering that point.
And Carrie has emailed and snail mailed that letter, so it's officially been sent to Womata.
All right. Thank you all. Thank you, and we look forward to hearing how that hearing turns out. Appreciate all your good work. All right, let's move on to the next item, then. The Fairfax Falls Church Community Services Board?
Well, Mayor and members of council, I'm glad to welcome some guests to the council work session tonight. And Daryl Washington is the general manager of the Community Services Board, the Fairfax County Falls Church. And Nancy, perhaps I'll... Would you be willing to introduce everybody? And then what the intent tonight is, is basically some introductions with their CSB staff to discuss the services that are provided by the CSB. And then there are some specific issues that we've been active on, of course, the Miller House. And then we'd be interested in discussing some of the changes at the state funding level that might have impacts on the budget that we're developing right now. We've given the council a little bit of advanced discussion about that, knowing that numbers aren't final yet. But with that introduction, maybe I'll turn it over to Nancy first for introductions, and then we'll go from there.
I am very happy to introduce this group who's here tonight. I'll introduce two people and then let Daryl introduce the rest of the team. First of all, where's Ed? You all probably know Ed Rose, who serves as the city representative to the Community Services Board, and has been doing it for how many years now? Three?
Four.
Four?
Yeah, I've dealt with the CSB for 30 times.
Okay. Okay. And then I'd like to introduce Daryl Washington, who has been the executive director of the CSB since May of last year, May 2018, after having spent five years as the deputy director of the CSB, and then with the county since 96, since 1996, roundabouts. And is a licensed clinical social worker by training. And I've known Daryl for several years and know how very capable he is and how well the CSB serves our residents. And I'm going to let him introduce the rest of his executive team who is here with us tonight.
Thanks a lot, Nancy, and good evening, council. So again, my name is Daryl Washington. I'm the executive director at the Fairfax Falls Church Community Services Board. So to my right here is Mike Goodrich. He's the assistant deputy director over... Or the deputy director over administrative operations. And then to my left is Barbara Wadley Young. She is one of my assistant deputies. And then Georgia Bachman, who's another one of my assistant deputies, and Lucy Caldwell, who's our public information officer here. So since we had 100% turnover at my executive leadership group over the past year, I figured I'd invite everybody to come out so you can get a chance to put a name with the face. And that way, if you have any questions in the future, you can call them and get your questions answered, because they know a whole lot more about what's going on than I do sometimes. So in your... In front of you should be a blue folder. We put a lot of information on some of the services that we provide at the Community Services Board. Also, there's a PowerPoint there. I'm going to go through that fairly quickly, because I'd like for this to be a dialogue where if you have questions or anything that comes up, you can feel free to ask me, or if I can't answer it, I'll pass the mic on to someone else. So at a high level, there's 40 CSBs across the Commonwealth. It's mandated by the Code of Virginia that every locality have one. If someone around here needs to get access to our care, they can call our main number, We will provide referral services. We will also provide screening and crisis services over the phone. And then at our Maryfield Center, right up the street in Maryfield, is our largest facility in the Community Services Board. And every day, Monday through Friday, we provide walk-in services. And that's also where our 24-hour, seven-day-a-week emergency services continuum operates out of that building as well. So our mission is to basically provide quality care for all the citizens and residents of our community, and making sure that people are living the healthiest lives possible. We serve children and youth. We also serve individuals with developmental disabilities, mental health issues, as well as substance use disorders. Our 2019 priorities: Medicaid expansion is a huge thing, just kicked in at the beginning of this year. When we look at our numbers, we know around 600 folks that we presently serve should be eligible for Medicaid. Thus far, we've been able to get 200 folks, roundabout, signed up for Medicaid, that now have Medicaid, that didn't have it at the beginning of the year. And we've got about another 200 folks in the queue already. So my goal is to have all 600 of those folks signed up for Medicaid come summertime at least. The other thing is the Welcome Inclusion Network. We need to look at the ways that we're providing day unemployment services for individuals with developmental disabilities. That is the largest line item in my organization and my budget by far. It's right around $26 million just for that one service area. And it's growing at a significantly higher rate than a lot of other service areas. We need to look at new ways of providing that service and partner with the community. And the Welcome Inclusion Network has been put together, and we're really looking for community involvement to help us come up with ideas where we can provide that service better. All of you should have heard about the opioid epidemic. The county, as well as the cities, put together an opioid task force. We've taken that head-on through multiple ways and jurisdictions. We are buying treatment beds. We are providing Project Revive services, which is Narcan, you might have heard about it, which is the opioid reversal drug. We're providing medication-assisted treatment. And we feel like we're trying to make a dent in things. There were few... Fewer opioid deaths last year than there were in the previous years in the Commonwealth of Virginia. So we're hopeful that we can keep that trend going in the right direction. Peer recovery services is something that we want to grow. It's an evidence-based practice. It's also a very cost-efficient way of providing services. The CSB has a set of mandated services that kicked in with the Code of Virginia. A few years ago, they passed that. So come July 1st of this year, all CSBs in the state are required to have walk-in assessment during the same day, as well as primary healthcare screening and assessment done for those folks. And then in 2021, there's an additional seven set of services all CSBs have. The good thing is our CSB already provides most of those services that are going to be mandated. But the key is it makes sure that we have those services not just in pockets in different areas, but we have them robust throughout the county... The cities, as well as the county. A few high-level things. One is the Diversion First program. There's an annual report in the folder that you got. Diversion First is really about diverting folks that have a mental health or a substance use issue away from incarceration. We've partnered with the police, local sheriff, your police department here as well, and really look to get all of our officers CIT trained. And instead of individuals ending up in the adult detention center for minor nuisance crimes, having them come over to Maryfield and have us assess them for a mental health issue, a substance use issue, and get into treatment and care, rather than ending up at an adult detention center where they're not going to get the type of treatment that they need. The other key thing is integrated healthcare. We serve the severe and persistent mentally ill individuals, and on average, they die anywhere from 20 to 25 years younger than you and I do, of the same type of health conditions that we are, you know, most likely going to die of when we get older. We need to try to move the curve and move the bar on those folks and get them access to quality care in a timely way so they can live healthier and more fulfilling lives. So I know I've been talking at you for a while. I wanted to sit back and give you guys a chance to kind of look over things and then see if you have any questions.
All right. Well, thank you for that report, and thanks for all of you coming out tonight. It's great to, as you say, put a name with a face, and we appreciate the good work you do for our community. Are there questions that folks have at this point? Mr. Lichtenhouse?
Daryl, thank you for that. And thank you for the guys... Thank you guys for the services you provide. Much needed, for sure. Where's the primary source of funding for CSB?
You guys around the table, as well as the counties Fairfax and the cities of Fairfax.
Okay. Any state level?
Yeah, we get state-level funding. Right now, only around 7% or 8% of our budget comes from the state. We also like any other health insurance company bill. So we bill Medicaid, Medicare, private insurance for the services that we provide, and get reimbursement for those services as well.
Great. All right, thanks.
Ms. Hardy?
Thank you. I'll reiterate, just really such important work that you all do for the community, so we appreciate it. I noticed in your annual report, it looks like you serve about 24,000 people. How many of those you know are City Falls Church residents?
That is a difficult question to answer. We could run a report by zip code, so we could give you a ballpark. But what I've found out is, within the zip code, there's breakouts where not all of them are going to be Falls Church city residents. So I could give you a ballpark number, but we don't have any way to kind of identify someone as a Falls Church city resident right in our healthcare record to be able to run a report and say, this is the exact number of people that are served that live in Falls Church.
I'd be interested just to ballpark to know whether our citizens are... How many of them are accessing this? Because I think it's one of those things we haven't talked about very much, at least in my three years on council so far. So I'd love to make sure that these services are equally well-known to our community as well. Thank you.
All right. Other questions, comments? Mr. Duncan?
Thank you. Thank you all for your work. You mentioned the diversion program to send people away from the ADC. Nuisance crimes. Could you just give an example of the kind of, you know, offenses that you're trying to, you know, put into the diversion pathway instead of the detention pathway?
Sure. I think the famous one that people use is that there was a young lady or man that was sitting on top of the watermelon bin in front of Wegmans that obviously was experiencing some type of mental health issue. Rather than sort of having that person arrested for trespassing, the police officer was able to get that individual and then bring over to Maryfield for an assessment and get access to care. So with that, if the individual commits some type of crime, that's a higher sort of barrier crime, if you will, then of course diversion would not be appropriate at that time. And then also, the individual that's... The crime is committed against always has the option of pressing charges. You know, the ball is always in their court for doing that as well.
So just to carry that a little further, in the case of a mental health situation, let's say our police here, you know, encounter somebody in a circumstance that fits that description. They need to get them somewhere to be assessed, right? Some of that gets done at Arlington... Virginia Hospital Center. Some of that gets done by you all. I mean, talk me... Walk me through how a Falls Church policeman is going to deal and where they're going to go with them, and how long it's going to take, and where they go if they qualify for services.
So Falls Church is a little bit different in that if someone needs to be hospitalized, your officers do take people down to the Arlington Hospital Center. But our goal is try to interrupt that cycle before they have to be hospitalized. So right now, at Maryfield, we have a number of Fairfax County sheriff officers and sheriff deputies. And we've set up an MOU agreement in between those deputies and officers and Falls Church city police. So a Falls Church officer, if they pick someone up on the street that was having some type of mental health issue, they could take them over to Maryfield, do an exchange of custody, which would take around 15, 20 minutes, and then be right back out on the street. And then that deputy or that Fairfax County officer would then have custody of the individual, and then the clinical team at the CSB would assess them for whatever type of service or care they would need.
That's pretty significant savings of time for our officers, as I understand it, because you can get tied up if you're down at the hospital for better part of a day sometimes because of the, you know, workload and the availability of exam rooms and so forth. I mean, that seems like a very good thing for us.
Exactly right. That was the big carrot that we wanted to put out there for law enforcement, is that, you know, before, it was quicker to drop individuals off at the adult detention center than take them to get hospitalized. We wanted to make it just as fast for us to do an exchange of custody at Maryfield so that officers would be encouraged to take people there when appropriate, rather than taking them to the adult detention center.
And do they then fall under the standards of the Creedence legislation? I mean, the commitment that anybody who needs help must be found a place where they can be helped?
Yeah. If they meet the criteria, whether they're, you know, imminent risk to themselves or someone else, then yeah, there's certain timelines we have to follow. And then within the law, we're going to make sure that we find them a hospital bed. And sometimes we can find a hospital bed pretty easy. Sometimes we have to call 15, 20 different hospitals to find a hospital bed. It really all depends on how busy things are and what's going on at that particular time.
And that's something that your staff does. You're on the phones, calling. What's the furthest way you've had to locate somebody when conditions are especially crowded?
We haven't had to locate anybody out of state recently. I know in the past, we've had to locate people in Maryland, Petersburg.
Out of region.
Is where Western State Hospital is, is one of the state psychiatric hospitals.
So you definitely have sent people out of region, I mean, out of Northern Virginia.
But by far, the busiest in the hospital that we use the most are two hospitals, and that would be Fairfax, and then Dominion would be the other hospital.
Okay. All right. Thanks for explaining all that.
Mr. Z?
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you for dragging all your folk out here to meet with us and to be here and explain the diversity of your services. I want to talk on the budget thread a little bit, because going into the legislative season in Richmond, there would be a... The state had expressed a preference for transitioning from state funding to essentially throwing it over to Medicaid. And that would have, as I recall, resulted in a several-million-dollar hole for at least the... Well, our current period. So if you could maybe just give us a little insight on how that's affected, if it has had any effect, and what you've done to try to mitigate those effects?
Sure. That's a good question. Too early to tell right now would be the answer for that, hence the reason why we're tracking the number of new folks that have gotten signed up and are on Medicaid. So every CSB across the state has certain revenue targets, because there are more people on Medicaid, therefore, we'd be able to bill for more services. Since we're the largest CSB, we have the largest amount of revenue target that we have to do. So for FY 19, our revenue target is a little bit south of 1.7 million. For FY 20, that revenue target jumps up to 4.3 million dollars in additional revenue that we're supposed to be able to produce. I advocate it strongly with the state. I think that is an extremely optimistic number, to say the least, for us to be able to produce those services. We will definitely be able to produce more revenue. I think that 4.3 million dollar number is a bridge too far, if you will, as far as the amount of revenue that we'll be able to produce during FY 20. That being said, the governor has put some money and set it aside in the proposal. set it aside in the proposed budget, $7 million, if I remember correctly, for CSBs in case there is a shortfall of revenue production, if you will, because not just myself, but a lot of other executive directors across the state have the same concern around those revenue targets being just too high for the CSBs to produce.
Thank you very much.
All right. Any other questions? Vice Mayor Connolly?
I'll echo my colleagues, and thank you for all the work that you do and the people that you serve. Can you just talk a little bit about your relationship with the schools, with Falls Church City Schools? I know there have been, I know you work with some of the social workers there and providing services, and I'm just, and I know it's changed over time.
Sure. So with the schools, I of course work with Nancy all the time on part of the CPMT when there's a student that has children's services acts needs. We typically will let the school psychologists and the school social workers take the lead for things happening at the school. But we always leave ourselves available, so that if a crisis does come up, typically what will happen is we'll pick up the phone, we'll call the psychologist, we'll call the social worker, we'll ask our services. The way things typically work is that inside the school, if there's a crisis going on, the school psychologist and social worker will take care of that. But if something spills out into the community, if you will, that's where the CSB will step in to sort of help with any kind of community crisis or presence that that might be going on if something were to happen.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Okay. Mr. Snyder?
So how do you define success, and what is your success rate?
I'm going to pass that to Barbara now. Sure. No, I think success is defined differently depending on the population that we're working with. You know, for me, success is allowing individuals that we serve and treat to live the most fulfilling life that they have the capacity to do within our community. So if you have someone that has a developmental disability, and we are able to find a place in the community for them to live, and able to find either a day program or a part-time job for them to live in, I call that success. If we have someone that has a severe and persistent mental health issue, and that person historically has been cycling in and out of the hospital, and the only time they come access us is when they're in the middle of a crisis, and I can get that person linked up with a case manager or a therapist, and then on some type of medication where they might be able to work part-time and get some housing and supports in, I would call that success. So to me, it looks a little bit differently, depending on the type of person that shows up, whether it be at Maryfield or any of my other sites where services are provided.
Okay. I may follow up and just ask you for any further comments you have on that question later on. So I look at your Revive training course, and I'm wondering if it's possible to schedule some training either in the evenings or weekends when more folks here in the city could take advantage of the training. I think frankly, in this day and age, everybody ought to be trained on this. And I see that it's only in the Chantilly area where you do a weekend training. The rest are during the day. So my question is, is it possible to schedule one or more training opportunities where more of our citizens could take advantage of that?
Sure, we can do that.
Okay, great. We'll be in touch. Thanks.
All right. Yes, of course. Yes, of course.
I was attorney in Fairfax. I worked with CSB for 30, 35 years. It's one of the reasons I asked to put on the board, because I have enormous respect. But there's one takeaway that I don't think people fully understand, is how complicated the CSB is. Those who have been clients or have family members that are clients probably understand it better than most. But there are three jurisdictions. Who knows how many federal and state regulations that have to be followed and changed from year to year. There's funding from the state, local, federal government, fee-based, a whole host of programs. I couldn't tell you how many facilities and group homes and residential facilities and treatment centers. And then you have the clients who fall into three basic categories: mental health, developmental disabilities, and substance abuse. But it's not quite that simple, because all these people are very much an individual. Some are young, some are old, some have family support, some have no family support. Many of them are dual-diagnosed, mental health and substance abuse, or so on and so forth. So trying to describe the CSB simply is very, very difficult. And it's very, very difficult for staff to have any kind of a fit program, because the people don't fit into very many categories. They are as different in where they get their funding, where they live, their age, the regulations they fall under, what their basic problems are, that to run the CSB is far more complicated, and it almost defies a ready description. But a good job they do do.
All right. Well, that's readily apparent, I think, to all of us. We appreciate your work and your many-year, multi-year involvement. But I think from these materials, it really does show the breadth of your programs and all the different folks you help, not only in our community, but throughout the region. So we're greatly appreciative of that. And if anyone else here this evening would like to speak, we'd certainly welcome your comments about different programs or your different areas of expertise. Was there more you wanted to speak and go through?
No, I covered everything I wanted to cover.
Sure. Vice Mayor Connolly?
I'm just wondering if there's anything you need from us, apart from the funding that we provide. Is there anything?
More?
Is there anything that the City of Falls Church can be doing to support our residents more, to help as they go? I'm just wondering if there's anything that comes to mind.
Nancy and I have talked about coming up with some programs that use facilities in the city, such as the Unity Club, partnering with the CSB, either just to get together and exchange ideas on treatment, or actually get together and have some sort of joint programs. I did tell the Unity Club early on, we can't give any money. We barely have enough for ourselves. But we would like to partner, and Nancy and I have talked about coming up with ways which facilities in the city can partner with the CSB to benefit both the CSB and the city.
Mr. Duncan?
Just causes me to want to ask, the one population that we note more of here in the city as we age are older folks who are, you know, trying to age in place in their homes. Some of them more successfully than others, particularly if they end up being alone in their homes. I guess it sort of falls under the mental health category. But I'm just wondering, did you notice any increased prevalence of situations like that, or is there any special response? These are people who, you know, they have a roof over their heads generally of some sort, although sometimes the houses are not very well-kept up. So you don't find them out, you know, on the street, and they're not acting out, I guess, maybe in a way that you might see some mental health cases. So they're a bit invisible. And I just wonder, is there an effort to reach out, or is there anything we can do to, you know, be aware of situations like that? And if we're aware of them, is there anything you can do to help with them?
Yes, we do. Part of our behavioral health outpatient team, we do have an older adult specialty team who do go out into individuals' homes, you know, in the community to address some of those concerns that you mentioned, and try to connect them with services in the community, to connect them with senior centers, obviously to connect them with primary care providers. Many of them are homebound, and we will bring in psychiatric staff as well to help them with their medication and just make sure that their needs are being addressed. And then Lucy was just reminding me, too, that we have, do have a, we're part of a regional team that also assists with connecting people with assisted living when those, when it's time for those individuals to move outside of their home. And this regional, I'm forgetting what RAFD stands for.
It's RAFD.
If you search on the CSB website, it will come up. Hurry up.
It's nice to know that there are acronyms that even you don't know what they mean.
Yes.
Certainly, there are plenty of them that I have no idea.
Having a blank.
Trying to get the word out about it.
But what's great about this team, they work, you know, as a region, and they will provide specialized mental health and behavioral health care to individuals in some of our assisted living and nursing homes, to provide that extra level of support to individuals when they transition. Because, not surprisingly, some of these, the facilities don't feel that they're equipped to manage some of the, some of our older individuals who have some behavioral health concerns. So that's one of the projects. And then there's, we also have a long-term, do you want to speak to that a little bit?
The CSB is also part of the Long-Term Care Cross-Agency Planning Group, which includes Neighborhood and Community Services, the Health Department, the Area on Aging, and another, a number of other agencies. And we work collaboratively to make sure that our assessments intersect our processes of referring individuals out to senior centers and Adult Day Health Centers and other services available for older adults, that there's that same kind of reciprocity if they come across anyone in the course of all of their work with the Area on Aging, that they can refer directly to the CSB, that they know who to contact for those kinds of services. So we're strengthening the process to make it more seamless for older adults, regardless of which door they come in through. And that's a big focus for us in this year.
Okay. Well, that's good to hear, I think. I guess, because we're politicians and do a lot of knocking on doors, maybe, you know, we're aware more so than busy people who are running downtown to their jobs, of people who, when you meet them at the door, you marvel that they're able to hold on, you know, where they are, and you wonder if they're getting help. And I'm, you know, Mr. Z has spoken about that, others on council have too. And I'm always haunted by the example of my next-door neighbor, who was a, I guess you'd call him service-resistant, you know. He was a disabled veteran, and just as the years went by, he became more kind of closed-in and eventually died. You know, he had family that was down in Hampton Roads, and it was not a good situation, you know. And I always wished that I had known a little bit more about what I should do if I, I don't know if I've done any good, but, and now I would be more interventionist, I think, just knowing, you know, that there are services out there. So I think it's good that you're focusing on that.
You just reminded me that our prevention team, who run what you might have heard of as our Mental Health First Aid programs, where they go out into the community and educate the community on sort of signs and symptoms of mental illness, and teach and kind of promote an awareness. They actually have a older adult kind of module for Mental Health First Aid for exactly that purpose. And I'm sure they'll be offering more of those as our population ages.
That's good. Maybe have to make sure that's not applied to politicians, because they might be thought to be unwell for what we do. But that's good. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Well, listen, thank you all for coming out and for the great work you do, day in and day out for our community.
Thank you for having us.
Absolutely. Our pleasure.
Thank you for being here.
All right. Our next item is the West Falls Church Economic Development Interim Agreement Material Terms item, although I don't see our developer here yet.
I saw him poke his head in, and then he made, if we, could we maybe just have a minute break, and we could get ourselves organized? I also need to get some slides up on the wall. And we don't have Cindy here. We're relying on the city attorney, which who knows what might happen.
All right. So you believe he's here?
Yeah, he is. Just a very short break.
Maybe, all right, sounds good. We'll take a short, short break. All right. Are we ready to reconvene? Okay. Well, let's move on to the next item. Mr. Shields, would you like to give us some introductory remarks, some comments?
Mayor and members of council, what we'd like to do tonight is just walk through a, an amendment to the interim agreement. This is a topic that we've been discussing now for about four weeks, four or five weeks. And we've had consultations with the school staff and others, just to make sure that the school board's informed about this discussion as well. But what is before us is a request by our development partner for an amendment to the interim agreement. And our development partner can speak to some of the reasons for that. But what I want to say, just by way of introduction, is that we have been procuring the, this whole development program through the Public-Private Partnership Act. And in that sense, this is a partnership. And it's an area where, if there are difficulties on one side of the partnership, then the other partner can look at it, see if there's a role for that partner to look together, to find solutions for it. And in this case, we've done so with an idea, if there's a financing challenge that the partnership has, then, and if we were to make any changes to the material terms to the interim agreement, then we would want to do that on the basis of, if there's a give here, there's a take over here. There might be some short-term trades in exchange for long-term benefits to look out for the city's long-term interests, and to do so in the spirit of trying to make sure that the project is financeable and feasible. So that has been the spirit of these discussions over the last couple of weeks. And so we have a number of slides, just to go through the details of that. But before I go through those slides, and I think we'll do it together, Mr. Goldman is here representing EYA, and we have other members of the team here as well, Andrea Dundee with PN Hoffman, Sean Seaman with PN Hoffman, and Nate from Regency. And we have other members from PN Hoffman as well. So we also have our consultants here, Jay Brown and Ted Risher. So we have some slides to go through to brief the council and the public on what is on the table for consideration. And ultimately, what the request is, and the recommendation that I would make to the city council, is to agree to these amendments, but to do so, not tonight, obviously, but to look at them closely, and then can have council consideration for them on February 11th. We're right now working on the actual legal language to enact the things that we'll describe tonight, so tonight's presentation will really be at the conceptual level of what it is we're talking about. Mr. Goldman, before I go through some of our slides, any introductory remarks you would like to make?
I'd just like to say thank you for-- There we go. Members of the council, my name is Evan Goldman from EYA. Just wanted to say thank you for having us here this evening to consider this proposal. And I'll kind of give a little bit of an overview after why it goes through the slides tonight. But we think we have an incredible project here, very similar to what we've talked about for the last six months with all of you, that is going to be financially feasible and is going to change the west end of the city for decades to come. So we look forward to talking through this with you.
So just by way of background, the city council and Falls Church Gateway Partners, which is represented, which is composed of EYA, PN Hoffman, and Regency, together we entered into an interim agreement in December of 2018. And that interim agreement sets forth a schedule, deposit requirements, and material terms that will be factored into a comprehensive agreement that we are working towards executing in May of 2019, now just a few months away. We're in the due diligence period of that interim agreement. And as we've gone through the due diligence process, the development partner has uncovered issues in their assumptions about the financeability of the project, and they've come to us. They've been transparent about that. It's been an open book process, again, in the nature of that public-private partnership that I described earlier, so that we could see what the issue was. The, and some of the things that we'll talk about tonight, we believe would address the issue. Overall, the schedule is on track. Ms. Aubrey, our project manager, is right now working with the special exception entitlements-- Ms. Aubrey, our project manager, is, is right now working with the special exception entitlements process, which will involve all of our boards and commissions, will involve very intensive staff review over the next couple of months, but that process is on track. And that's very much, you know, on the critical path towards working towards a May resolution of both the land entitlements and the comprehensive agreement. So in the amendment that's requested, a couple of things that aren't changing, I'll just note that right up front, the core land payments, the value that the partnership is willing to pay for the land, that is not changing. And so I'll describe that, just to remind everybody what that is. In addition, the idea of a Phase One and a Phase Two and the schedule of work, that also is not changing. The environmental goals that were enshrined in the material terms, lead gold for all of, all of the buildings, lead gold neighborhood design, and at least lead silver for the hotel, all of those are unchanged. So the land payments, just to remind people on the next slide, in Phase One, there's a series of five payments, the first being 6.5 down payment that would occur immediately after execution of the comprehensive agreement and the special exception entitlement. And then that would be followed by four payments of $7 million each, starting in 2021, and then again, each year until, through 2024, for a total in that Phase One of $34.5 million of base land value. And for Phase Two, which would be payable at least at the latest in 2029, there'd be a payment of $10 million or appraised value, whichever is higher, after accounting for an infrastructure credit, for a total of $44.5 million of base land payments. So that is unchanged. And council will recall, also, there were some credits that would increase that land value, but those are at the city's choice. And those include, if the city chooses to form a CDA and issue bonds for that CDA, then there's a $2.5 million credit. And for the garage, which we still have a lot of details we need to work out on, but there's a, would be a credit for that of 5.3 million, if the city chooses that above, above-ground parking garage. And with that 5.3 million dollars, we've had a lot of discussion about that number, and fundamentally, what, what the partnership, when they submitted their proposal, they had assumed that would be for 150 parking spaces for the schools. That number is now, is, is been clarified as 187 spaces for the schools, and so there will be some discussion about then, what, the impact that will have on that 5.3 million. So we're currently calling that a range of between 4.1 and 5.3 million dollars as, as a credit for exercising the garage, the shared garage option. So that's just some background on some of the core things that are in the interim agreement that are not, that are not changing. The new provisions will start with a description of the real estate taxes, and at this point, we can probably sort of jump in together to describe things, make sure that the full picture is being told. But to help with the overall financeability of the project, and to address the concern that was raised during the due diligence period, there are really two big things that we're talking about. First is a deferral of certain real estate taxes, and in exchange, the city would receive an increase in ground rent for the term of the lease, and I'll describe that in detail. Then the second item is an increase in residential density. So those are the two principal things that are being requested in, in this amendment. So for the real estate tax provisions, there's a chart that, that lays that out. The bottom line is that over the construction period, what is being requested is that approximately $4.5 million in real estate taxes would be deferred during that construction period. We anticipate that, as the project proceeds, that under the normal course of business, approximately $16.5 million in real estate taxes would be due in the period between 2021 and 2026. We would substitute that for a payment in lieu of taxes, which between the ground lease and the condo portions would pay a total of $12 million in real estate taxes in that period, in that six-year period between 2021 and 2026. So effectively, what we're talking about is $4.5 million of taxes that would be deferred. And again, these are all based on projections of how the, the construction would proceed and things like that. But we think they're realistic projections and, and good numbers to work with. And in exchange for that deferral of $4.5 million in real estate taxes, an increase of the ground rent in the amount of $200,000 per, per year would commence in the year 2029, and would last through the life of the lease. So the, from 2029 through the 99-year lease. That has, as we've calculated it, a $48 million nominal value, just if you add up all the stream of $200,000 payments, and then if you discount that at a 3.5% discount rate, which is generally the cost of municipal money, that would result in a present value of that, of $7.1 million. So that, and I'll now turn it over to, to Mr. Goldman for further discussion of that. But the idea of this discussion has been, if there's relief granted on, at, at one port, part of the, of the construction period, then the city gets a benefit over the long term.
All right, thank you, Wyatt. So there's a chart that's been handed out, I believe you all have that in front of you, and that just goes through in details on an annual basis, the taxes that were expected to have been paid versus the taxes that are being requested. Oh, yeah, there we go, they're going around now, sorry about that. So I, I don't, I don't, you know, this is more for all of you to take with you, and we gave it a consider over the week, prior to next Monday. It goes through in details everything, and to the extent anyone has any questions, we're happy to answer those, and the interim basis. But what Wyatt essentially is explaining is, you know, there's always, there's always, on both the city side and as a property owner or developer, there's this kind of unknown as to exactly what taxes are going to be on the project as it delivers. And so one of the nice things about this is that it gives clarity on both sides as to what taxes will be, for, so you don't have to worry about an appeal for the first number of years while the project is ramping up and delivering through 2026. And then the payment, which, the kind of tax deferment payment that starts in 2029, is $200,000, it also grows at 2% a year, so it will, you know, keep pace or slightly outpace CPI, depending on how the economy grows over the next 90-some-odd years. But that becomes a nice annuity for the city over time, and generates slightly more value for the city in today's dollars, but it certainly over, in total dollars over the life of the lease, creates, you know, north of $40 million of value for the city. And so the nice thing there, and why we appreciate it so much, is, as you can imagine, when you're financing a deal, the earlier you're paying costs, the more expensive it is to the project, and so by pushing those costs out a bit, it is helpful to the financeability Yeah, that's correct, and, and the reason for that provision is twofold. So, you know, we needed a little protection just in case the schools is delayed for some unknown reason by two, three, four years in delivering the school. No one expects that, obviously, and it shouldn't happen, but to some extent, if it is, the idea is for the pilot to take place while the construction of the project is taking place, so to the extent we're delayed a number of years, the pilot would start when the project is, the land is delivered to us, or within 12 months of the land delivering to us. That 12-month period just gives us the time to, that we may need to get, pull permits and get construction started and, and, you know, get in the ground. Our expectation and hope is that we're starting construction a month after you deliver the land to us, but you never know if, you know, it could be a few months by the time you get your financing and get in the ground, so, or do some site work. And it actually provides a really good incentive to the development team, because to the extent, you know, we wait two years to start construction, which is not our intention, but if that were to happen, we're giving up a portion of the tax benefit that you've all granted us, essentially. So there is an incentive for us to get started as quickly as possible to take full advantage Yeah, thank you, just to give a, a little color. So on the senior housing, you know, I apologize, we, we should have asked for that initially. We had had some conversations with senior housing providers that had told us that they might want to be bigger than we had included, and it was just an oversight on our part. And so the, the two people that we're talking most closely with at this point, both seem to be in the 200,000 to 225,000 square foot range, and so that's slightly more than what was in our IA, so that's what that 50,000 square feet is for. And keeping to the provisions of the original IA, which was 60% independent living, is still a requirement in that as well. The other, the residential square footage, there's two things we're, we're considering there, as Wyatt pointed out. So one would be additional condominiums, largely geared towards empty nesters. The other is a product that we're working through from a design perspective, thinking about, and from a marketing perspective, are these micro units. And where we think they could be really interesting for the city, is that they provide kind of a, a more affordable price point within the city, to live in either a studio or a one-bedroom. They're really targeted towards people right out of college, and as far as the amenities within the building, the size of the units, and because the units are smaller, you can, you can charge less rent for them. And so somebody is essentially giving up space to, to have an easier lifestyle, less, less of an apartment to maintain, less cleaning, less everything, and they work really well in mixed-use projects, where you have all the amenities of life right outside your front door, which is what we plan to deliver here, or in urban areas as well. EYA, PN Hoffman, both have experienced delivering them, or I should say, my former job at Federal Realty, we have experience delivering them, as does PN Hoffman. And, and they do tend to find younger people who want to live out, outside or outdoors most of the time. And what's great about that is we're going to need diners in our restaurants, we're going to need people attending the music venue, and these are exactly the type of target we're trying to get into the city, kind of a younger group of people, shouldn't have an, an impact on schools, and should start to create a little bit of a nightlife economy, or a little more of a nightlife economy for the city as well. So there's, there's some benefit there that we, that we think is interesting and unique for the city. They tend to drive less, you know, there's a whole bunch of kind of other benefits, and there's few sites where you can do it. This one happens to work well because of the retail mix, we're delivering the existing retail next door and the Federal Realty Shopping Center, as well as the metro so close in Yeah, so I have an exhibit that's up on the screen right now, and maybe zoom a tiny bit more, it might be hard for people to read. There we go, perfect. And so I ran two scenarios with this, just to keep it fairly simple. The only complexity here is that we have, we have a base land value, and then we also have a land value, including parking and the CDA. So what this first example, example one, is showing, this assumes that we do move forward with both the CDA and the parking garage above grade, and that creates a real base land value. a real base land value of 42.3 million, instead of the 34.5 million original. Then, then if the investor values the land at 50 million, we would essentially take that difference, the 7.7 million, and the city would receive 25% of that, or almost $2 million. In the second example, we've, I've assumed no CDA, no parking payment, and so the base land value is 34.5. And in this case, because there's no CDA, no parking, I assume the land value would be slightly less. In this case, I chose 42.2 million, just to show that it gets to the same $2 million land value for the city. To the extent that is higher, you, you know, you would get 25% of that as well. And so it, it aligns interests for both the city and for the developer as we're moving through the next two years and getting through the approvals. To the extent we're able to drive land value from an investor's perspective, the city gets to participate in that value creation.
Was exempted from that benefit, the city was exempted from, from the benefit of that fee on the first round of sales for the condos. So with this amendment, we would strike that exemption on the first sale of condos. So we had estimated for the leasehold that each time there was a, a refinance, that was about a, a $2.4 million benefit to the city. And we would anticipate that would be happening every 12, 15, 20 years or so with the first event. We had modeled in 2029, not knowing exactly when that event might be. But this will bring funds to the city earlier because the condos will sell earlier and, and the city will get that benefit sooner. So that is the last change of the material terms. The last thing I would describe is just some clarifications that we've had as, as we've been discussing the Community Development Authority and the Shared Parking Garage. Both of those, we acknowledge, we've got a lot of work to do on those. And it was always envisioned that we would resolve questions in the conference of agreement. And, but for the, the Community Development Authority, what the amendment to the terms would be is that it had originally been between a 2.5 and a $3 million payment. So we're settling on a, I'm sorry, between a two and a $3 million payment. So we're settling on a $2.5 million payment. But we are also indicating that that would be if the city chooses to create the CDA, and that CDA has the moral backing by the city for the bonds that are issued by that CDA. In the original agreement, that moral backing was not promised for the CDA. As we've studied it a little bit more, and we've looked at CDAs across the state, even when localities try to hold themselves aloof or apart from a community development authority, generally the bond investors view the city as the backstop, any protestations to the contrary. So that's, we will still study that more, but we're viewing that as, as sort of moving towards clarity on what that would do in terms of a form of a credit to the city if we take that option. And then lastly, the shared garage, as I mentioned at the beginning of this, the, the number of spaces at the school board is very clear now. They, the school board seeks 187 spaces in the shared garage. That is a different number than was originally assumed by the development partners. So there will be a change to that $5.3 million number. We're calling it a range between 4.1 and 5.3 in terms of the credit, if we, if we agree to the shared park, above-grade parking garage. But that number needs to be resolved over the next coming weeks. So that's a summary of the discussions we've been having. I would be happy to answer any questions, or attempt to answer any questions or comments from council.
All right. Well, thank you all for that presentation. We appreciate it. And I'm glad we're able to come more public with this information. As I think most people know, we've had a number of closed sessions over the past weeks. And we, as a council, have made a commitment to make as much of this public as possible. And, and tonight is, I think, in furtherance of that goal. I do want to thank in particular Mr. Shields, who has spent an extraordinary amount of time and effort on this project. And so I wanted to recognize that effort. And I think we on council know that, but publicly as well, that it's greatly appreciated. Why don't we go ahead and turn it over to questions or comments from members of council? Does anyone have any questions, comments, thoughts? Ms. Hardy?
I do have a couple of rounds of questions. So first for Evan and team. For the density increase for both the senior housing and the micro unit slash condos, do you know approximately how many units you'll be adding for each?
So that'll vary depending on the use. If it's condominiums, we're assuming approximately 1,250 square feet on average. So that would be approximately 40 additional condominiums. For the micro units, we haven't exactly designed the program for that building yet, but I would probably assume somewhere in the 500 to 600 gross square feet range. So it's 150 to 170 units or so, depending on the program. And it could be a split between the two. It could be that, you know, half of it is condo and half is micro, you know, that's all being studied.
And maybe a question for our staff is, do we ask for commitments in both square footage as well as number of units in any of our documents? Or do we ask for a range of no more than X?
Yeah, we have a, currently with the language that we're looking at has a, a maximum size. And do you want to speak to the numbers that are in the agreement?
Sorry. Yeah, so our, our assumption on, from the S, at the SCE level, what we've proposed in our application, which, by the way, I didn't get to mention, but our SCE application was filed today officially. So that's now in the city's hands. And in that application, we give a range of square footage with a maximum cap on residential square footage and a minimum on commercial. And on unit count, we give a range as well. And the idea would be that we would get a range approved at SCE for the whole project. And then as we come in for site plan on the buildings, we would specifically give unit counts that you would all approve for every, each individual project. And by then we'll know if this building is a condo or a micro rental, or exactly what we're doing with that building, and can go through that with all of you.
Okay. So related question for staff is, with this increase in density, do we know what the new FAR calculation is? And how does that compare to what we had planned? Maybe a question for Evan, too.
We will certainly do an FAR calculation as we're reviewing the SCE, but since we got it today, I don't know that we've done that.
I imagine it's still within kind of.
If it's 10 acres, that's, what, 10 times 43,000? Yeah. And then you've got 150,000 square feet. So what does that add, .3 maybe FAR, something like that?
Yeah, we're still under a 3 FAR in total. We're right around a 3 FAR, actually. So I think the original was a 3 to 4. Is that right?
I think you're higher than that, but it would add .3. I think 150,000 square feet would add approximately .
I'm sorry, you're right. We're at 3 and 1/2. And so we're under the 4.
Yeah.
On the senior housing, the 50K increased. I think I heard you say that there was the original commitment that 60% of that would be active living and not assisted living?
Yes.
And so that would apply to the 50,000 square increase as well?
Yes.
Other than the stuff that we're discussing, are we ready to come out of due diligence? Are there, are there anything else that's been uncovered, or?
No, nothing else has been uncovered. We're almost done negotiating the changes to the interim agreement, which is the last step. And so once that's approved by the council next Monday, we would be out of due diligence.
One of the changes in that amendment to the interim agreement is it states that due diligence is now over and completed.
Okay. And then a question for Mr., questions for staff and Mr. Shields. There's a lot of new information, I imagine, for the public. We've been discussing for a while. But I think what would be helpful is in kind of summarizing this, if there's a way to talk about what the total value change to the city is. So it doesn't talk about, you know, it doesn't impact the land value payments that we've laid out. But I don't see a number on the fiscals. And so putting aside subjective assessments of how people feel about that increase in density, I think many will be actually be surprised that the net fiscals are actually positive. And so I think we should probably talk about that. And then, again, overall, between the, the pilot that's being proposed, what is the overall change to the value for the city in a more succinct way? I think the slides do a good job of summarizing a pretty complex IA already and the proposed amendments. But I do think it would be helpful for the public to understand kind of what the overall change to the city would be between the pilot program, the density changes, and then the profit sharing. I think that's it for now, but I'll reserve the right to go back to it because there's a lot of information. Thank you.
All right. Other, Mr. Snyder?
Thank you very much. I want to thank the, my fellow members of council for dealing with a very difficult situation here. Within a few weeks after we had an interim agreement, the developer approached us and said they couldn't do what they promised to do, and instead had requested at least a $7 million return to them. The first element was a tax deferment of 4 and 1/2 million. Some of that would be made up, but not until payments started 10 years from now. Problem that I have with that is the longer that time goes out, the less certain that payment becomes. Second point is that they wanted to add, now we know, 600 new units of residential, giving them a huge additional profit, and raising the potential of school costs for us, although the unit types are less likely to achieve maximum school costs. Third element is the garage. If we constructed it, was originally talked about at $5.3 million benefit to the city. That's now potentially been reduced to 4.1 million. Regrettably, the reasons that I voted against this particular developer was my concern with the financing. And unfortunately, they made that concern a reality. However, I must commend the city council for dealing with a difficult situation. And I think they've managed to claw back at least some of that, but the uncertainty remains. I would have pursued other options. Thank you.
All right.
Could I just make one note? In terms of the increase in residential units, I think the number that was quoted was the total number of residential units. And so the increase, maybe I'll, just to briefly restate those numbers, what the increase might represent, if it's condos or if it's apartments?
Yeah. So if it's condominiums, it's roughly 40 units. If it's apartments, it's roughly 150 to 175. And we would assume we may do a split of both. So the maximum, you know, probably the end of somewhere in the 125 to 150 additional units.
All right. Other comments, Mr. Duncan?
So I think that lays down what we're going to be hearing out in the community. So that's the challenge. And, you know, you've messaged it to some degree, but just two things. It's, it's going to be important for people, I think, to understand, you know, what micro units really means. You know, pretty pictures and, and, you know, meat on the bones that you described there. Square footage is somewhat useful, although, you know, you really need to sell the sizzle, I think, of everything that you said, just so I think people intuitively understand. Anybody that's got kids who are out of college and are looking for a place to live around here are going to know exactly what you're talking about. And they're going to know that their kids don't have a car and rely on public transit and go out a lot and so forth and so on. So I think you really have to tell that story. On the condominiums, again, I think the community has interest in condominiums. We've not been very successful. We've been wholly unsuccessful at building condominiums in recent years here for a variety of market and, and neighborhood concerns. But this gives us an opportunity to, to build condominiums in the city of Falls Church that do appeal to folks who are basically trading out of their bigger single-family houses, but still want to stay in the city. Ms. Hardy has pointed out in the past that we need to be cautious about exactly what those condominiums look like, so that they are not more broadly appealing, if you know what I mean. You know, we need to have those condominium units look and feel like the kind of place that folks would live after they've lived in their single-family home for 30 years and decided to sell and, you know, still want to remain here in Falls Church. Again, square footage is, you know, 1250. I, I kind of have a picture of what that's like. But you've really got to show it to people, you know. How does that compare to, you know, the railroad cottage houses, for instance, which are now open and people can go kick the tires and see what that looks like? How does it compare to a condominium at the Broadway or the Byron or so forth? The, I mean, you know, I, I agree with Mr. Snyder that I, that I think it's, it's unfortunate that we had to spend what amounts to the retrade bullet here pretty soon. I always anticipated that, you know, something would happen in the market or in life and times and, you know, we'd be back at the table arguing over some significant amount of money. I didn't expect it to be quite so soon. That's a disadvantage. I mean, I'm hoping on hope now that we proceed through the process and, and, you know, do it along these lines. That makes it politically more salable. And it is just, you know, good business to, to try to agree to the promises that you've set forth. So I think you know that and we expect that. So one good aspect of this is that this has been a very intense, as Mr. Snyder, you know, stated, it's been a very intense process. It's, it's just had to be done, you know, in, in closed session, most of it. Sort of liken it to the fact that, you know, if you had a teenager and your teenager screwed up, you know, the parents have got to get together and talk about what the strategy is for dealing with the screw-up, you know, to make sure we're on the same page. And that's essentially what we've been doing. And now we can come out and everybody in the family is, I think, satisfied with the final outcome. I didn't, just wanted to go back to the senior housing. So the senior housing component is going to be, just to say it again, there, there's an assisted living component to the plan. And how big is that?
So we're restricted to no more than, no less than 60% independent living, with the remaining 40% being, could be partially independent living, but would also be assisted or memory care. Both the providers we're talking to are looking at both assisted and memory.
Okay. Well, there again, just, you know, I think there's been general acceptance of the assisted, heavy assisted living, memory care product at Kensington, at Sunrise. There's an understanding, there's a need for that in the community and in the broader area. But, you know, explaining that, that's a kind of housing that doesn't have a lot of public service costs attached to it. And that's, that's the plus. And I think that's about all that I wanted to say. I'll leave it up to everybody who's been working this in great detail to resolve the garage concern. I mean, I, I said when I voted for this conditionally early on, that I had concerns about affordability. Well, actually, I think this plan that we have now is better in terms of providing more affordable housing options. And that, and that's important. And it's, it's important also that, that people be able to see, you know, what you're talking about here, you know, your massing, your shadow studies. The one thing this project still didn't have, I think, is, is a clear, like, what's it going to look like? Is it really going to tower over the school? You hear that a lot, you know. And I know you've got at least conceptual notions of how that's going to work. I'd try to get those out as soon as possible because that will ease your pathway, I think.
Will do. And, and just, you know, the, the SCE application we just submitted does have shadow studies within it.
Okay.
And then, of course, we'll get into detailed architecture and placemaking of the next number of months.
Right. Anyway, I want to express my appreciation to everybody who's worked really hard to get us here where we are. And that goes for both sides of the ledger. I know the applicant as well as the, as the city staff and our consultants have all worked very hard on this. So thank you to you all.
All right. Who is next? Vice Mayor Connolly?
Thanks, everyone. Mr. Duncan mentioned the affordability of smaller units. I'm wondering about the affordable housing ratios. Do they still apply to the new density?
Yes.
And, and also to the senior living? However, we had set them up originally. It just extends.
Yeah, it extends to the independent living portion of the senior housing. And then, and then it applies to everything else, all the other units in the project, which is what our original proposal was.
Okay. And then as far as the optional land payment credits, slide number 10, the last one, just the, the CDA and the shared garage, what's the timeline on determining how we're going to go forward with those? Do we expect that in the next month or two months? Or I know it has to be done by May.
Soon. Soon. The, I think that it's right before us, and those are the kind of the big things we need to work out now.
Will you bring that back to us?
In the form of the comprehensive agreement, certainly, but we will brief you, you know, if we have what we think is a good workable solution for these, then we would brief you as soon as we have that so that you've got plenty of lead time to think about it before you're asked to act on it.
And then, because the parking garage is tied in with the school, the school board would also be included in all those discussions.
Absolutely, yes.
Mr. Z.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm glad we're all sitting around the table and exchanging our views freely. I want to remind the people who are perhaps questioning the change in uses, increase in residential, that we need the residential in order to build that kind of vibrant place that we've been talking about, and we were at no point close to what the planning commission had recommended for height and density, and I'm glad that the consortium EYAP and Hoffman Regency have used the opportunity of perhaps a funding shortfall to bring that forward. I think the other thing that people don't realize is that by having this increased density, that you aren't going to be building these things out of sticks. You now have metal over concrete or concrete over concrete, and that allows a lot more flexibility in having the kind of architecture that we all want. We know that building with sticks restricts you greatly in that respect also. Going to this higher grade of material will allow you to more easily achieve the kind of environmental attributes that you promised us. Just looking at some of the things that have been proposed here, I can see a lot of, as sitting man, you just said, give and take, and the fact that he's kind of happy, looks like with what's come out, and you guys look like you're pretty happy, too. No one's jumping up and down with joy, but it kind of means that we have a pretty good compromise here. From my perspective, I think we've contained our risk. We've pretty much clawed back all the things that we thought we'd had to give up. I'm happy that you were able to come up with some strategies that allow that. I think that going forward in a comprehensive agreement, obviously, the major task to ensure that the risk is fully contained, put in that box, is to have these nitty-gritty discussions on the timing and how much slippage is allowed, and I would like to see in a comprehensive agreement a way to give us visibility on the schedule, so it's not just some big fluffy series of bar charts that we actually know what's going on. We know how much work in place is going on. We know when you need to buy certain things, and we need to know that when you've bought those things, and so we keep, both of us can keep track. It keeps us, all of us honest, and we're working off data. I'm sure your investors would ask for that as well. I am extremely interested in understanding how the CDA and the parking garage is going to unwind all of this, and it is something that we haven't done here. We've never done that here, so on one hand, it's really exciting. On the other hand, I can imagine a lot of people would be really scared. But, you know, focus is what the future looks like. And if you want a parking garage that has a large number of, well, pick one, electrical charging stations, this is how we get it. So looking forward to that discussion going forward, and thank you for sticking out. Glad you're back here. Thank you.
Okay. Other comments? Mr. Lichtenhouse?
Actually, Mayor Carter, do you mind if I just make one comment before?
Of course.
So first of all, thank you for your comments, and just real quickly, you're right that a number of the buildings will now be, not be wood construction, specifically condominiums. The rental units will still be a wood frame building, but most of the project will not be wood framed, so you're right. That is correct. I just wanted to make sure that was correct.
All right. Thank you for that clarification. Mr. Lichtenhouse?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Question for you guys just related to unit mix. When we get to site plan, we start talking about unit mix, are you guys going to commit that if we have an issue with the unit mix as it relates to what we feel may be best situated for the site, are we risking you guys coming back and telling us that the unit mix that we would prefer to see or that we think works best over there doesn't make this project feasible at that point?
So not knowing, you know, where you're headed with that, it's hard to answer that question. My assumption would be no, based on everything I've heard from the city, and that our desire and thought is that the units, especially the rental units, are probably smaller, if not, if than what we've said, not bigger. And I know that there's nervousness about, you know, the potential for flooding the school that you've just built with a lot of new kids. I think most of the units are going to be delivering, are going to be studios, one-bedrooms, small one-bedroom dens, some two-bedrooms. So a unit mix, that's actually positive in that way. To the extent you want larger units, I think that could be a little harder on the rental side, just because, you know, whether those would work economically. On the condominium side, you know, there's fair housing, so clearly the condominiums, anybody can choose to live in the condominiums, but just from our experience of what we see of people buying two- and three-bedroom condominiums in the area, they generally tend to be empty nesters without kids. And so I think that's where we're targeting, is mostly two-bedrooms and some three-bedroom units. So to the extent you want those to be smaller condos, one-bedrooms, that could be a little harder because we just don't know that the market is there for that. And so I guess that's really more of a question for you. If you see the units designed, they're going to be bigger on the rental or smaller on the condo, that could be a little area of friction, but, you know, we're happy to work with you on all this stuff.
I think just from my standpoint, and I think from the city's standpoint, just having some clarity around the fiscal impact, obviously shifting unit mix.
Right.
From this point on, you know, I'm sure we will run into issues, hopefully smaller than the issues that we've had to deal with over the last couple of months, but clarity around the fiscals, I think, is an important piece. So I just want to make sure that you guys understand that once we get to site plan approval, if we're making considerable changes to what was envisioned as part of the IA and the conversation that would materially impact the fiscals, that's not really a conversation that I'm interested in having at that point, if it affects the feasibility of the project. I don't think it does, but I just wanted to ask that in the open. So, yeah, the last couple of months have been pretty trying with you guys, and, you know, I will echo the sentiments of a number of folks up here that have been thankful for the amount of work that the city's put into it, the folks on council. And I will tell you that, you know, I certainly appreciate the response that we get back from you all in terms of us drawing what I think is a very distinct hard line in the sand in terms of what we expected to get based on some of the changes. I fully expected for us to run into some significant hurdles between IA and CA. It just happens. I mean, this is an incredibly complex project, and in the city's history, we haven't dealt with something like this, and frankly, I don't think that there are many developers that have that kind of experience of delivering a transit-oriented development project in a two-square-mile city next to a metro stop. I mean, that's, it's a unique project in every sense of the word, so I was not surprised. However, the challenge that you guys did bring to us was a bit unique. And so, you know, I think that from my perspective, one of the most important things for me in this entire process has been building a long-term stream of annuity payments for the city. It's always great to get a big bag of money upfront, but the mechanisms that we can put in place for a deal like this that will be accretive to the city's tax coffers long after most of us are gone, I think is incredibly important. Nothing would make me happier than picking up the newspaper in 20 years, 30 years, and some surprise that some checks have continued to arrive to City Hall based on either condos turning over, a refinance of the project, ground rent escalation payments, you know, continuing to pour in. So I feel like we've effectively accomplished that, and frankly, taking the opportunity that, of what was, I think, in many of our minds, a pretty significant, you know, crisis in terms of this project and a crossroads that we're at, turning it into an opportunity. So I am pleased and would echo Ms. Hardy's comments that I'm frankly very interested to see how this changes the overall fiscals for the project, because I think that some of the mechanisms that we've asked you guys to put in place, and I think in previous meetings I've used the term, if we're going to help solve a problem, we want to exact our pound of flesh. And I think that we've been able to reach a mutually agreeable position that everybody can feel comfortable with. And I think that the fiscals, in the long run for us, with it's the ground rent, capital event fee, but some of the add-ons like the CDA and the parking garage, as well as the unit mix, frankly, I thought that was very creative coming up with micro-units and additional condos, both of which I think that the city needs. I think those micro-units will actually help solve a bit of an affordability issue for some folks that want to kind of have the whole-life experience here in the city. And I do think that that's going to be more accretive to the fiscals of the city overall in terms of putting more folks in stores, in restaurants, at bars, and spending money in this city, so I thought that was a creative solution. The last comment that I will make around the pilot, because that's frankly, I think, something new, and certainly when folks read about this, are going to have questions around that. And from my experience, being able to establish a guaranteed set of real estate tax payments early on in that project mitigates a tremendous amount of risk for the city, both in terms of market dynamics affecting the assessment that drives those real estate taxes, as well as someone's proclivity to appeal based on a change in market conditions. And given the size of this project and just what I've personally seen in other jurisdictions, and how much this is going to affect our commercial tax base, I look at that pilot provision as mitigating a fairly significant amount of risk for the city early on in the years of the project. I would much rather have a known entity from a real estate tax perspective to know that there is some variability that could leave us in a very, very difficult position, not only in terms of working with you as a partner, but also in terms of how that affects our potential fiscals as a city. So I think it's important for folks to understand that establishing that pilot for those early years in that project helps us mitigate a lot of risk, risks that otherwise we may have to plan around, and that level of uncertainty is very difficult to plan around. So, you know, overall, after many months, many difficult conversations, a lot of work, I feel that this is a good middle ground. I feel that the city, you know, we've taken the opportunity to generate additional benefit and value for the city, and I thank you guys for going back several iterations to get creative and coming up with some things that frankly, I think many of us wouldn't have expected in terms of a solution to this problem. So I'm hopeful that this is the last critical crossroads that we have to pass, although I understand, you know, there will be, and I think most of us understand that there will be some things that we'll have to address later on, but, you know, I feel that we've certainly overcome a significant hurdle and look forward to moving on, so thank you.
All right. Anyone else have any additional comments?
Process question. So the terms of this agreement, are they going to be folded into your SE application? Are they already part of it, or when does that marriage happen?
Actually, it's a separate process. So the SE application is going out now for review. This would come back, what we've talked about tonight, will come back to council in the form of an amendment to the IA for your action next Monday. Now, the SE will reflect these, assuming the council...
But not until we vote formally, so in other words, people have a week to kick the tires of this before we vote, and if it were to pass, then it would be folded into the SE.
That is correct. And the scheduled date for council referral out of the SE application is...
February 25th.
So that action would not, would happen after you've given consideration to this amendment to the IA.
Okay, thanks.
But the, many of these terms are going to be, there's going to be a revised set of material terms with the amendment to the IA, and that will outline much of what we've talked about today.
Again, just in terms of public access to what we're talking about here, is it going to be posted by Thursday as part of our next meeting packet, or?
Certainly will be posted as part of the packet, and we'll get a copy out sooner than that if it's going through its review right now, legal review, and we'll get it to council for you to look at as soon as possible.
All right. So I've got a few comments. I know there's going to be some additional documentation, as Mr. Shields just mentioned, and so my comments in some ways are directed at those. One, the discussion of micro-units, I think it has appealed to a lot of folks for some of the reasons you've heard, affordability, a different demographic, young people, transit-oriented, people who are interested in non-vehicular transportation, a lot of good things associated with that, but I guess my expectation, understanding would be that these units would not just be added on to your residential such that you have more units, that they're kind of blended out. In other words, that your number that you provided to us previously about what your blend and average unit size will actually come down because they're going to be blended out with 100,000 square feet of micro-units.
Yeah, that's correct. So the existing apartment building that we've proposed would remain substantially the same from a unit mix and square footage perspective, and this would be, the way we're planning it actually is that it would be its own distinct micro-building with smaller units and smaller, you know, different amenities that appeal to a different audience, so that's the intent.
That's something I'd like to see documented in the, you know, the revised IA, the IA amendment that we're going to do, that we actually can see that it's not just a commitment to more units, but it's a commitment to units that are micro-units, which have a different feel, and as we just mentioned, as I just mentioned. The garage, I know there's been some confusion, apparently there's been some confusion, although I don't think on the school folks' side, they seem to be pretty steadfast in the idea they've always had 187 parking spaces in there. I don't really know exactly what the answer to that is. I would just strongly encourage you to work together with the schools to try to get them the number of parking spaces they've requested, and as close to that $5.3 million number as we can. If it gets too low, at some point, it just doesn't make as much sense as it does at another number. So I would really see if you guys could get together with the school folks and work out a mutually agreeable solution, maybe in the coming days. With respect to the profit share, I like that idea, appreciate that. It's creative, it's interesting, but I think we have to make sure there's a mechanism that makes it objective, not just what, quote, your investors think it's worth, or some, you know, some member or some person who's a party to your partnership, but actually some kind of objective way to quantify the value of the land. I don't know what exactly that is, but I would like a mechanism that's not dependent on you all determining what the value is or one of your partners, but some kind of third-party mechanism to determine land value as to the profit share. And just lastly, I'd like to say, I understand there's going to be blips in the road, we just had one, or we're having one right now, but I don't want to make a habit of this, and I'm sure you don't either, so let's turn the page and move on. I think a lot of effort on all sides has gone into these past weeks to get us over this hump. I think this will be an extraordinary and transformative project for the city, but let's keep this thing on track and not have these occur and not come back with these kind of issues, if we can avoid them at any cost. I'm not sure what else needs to be said. Does anyone else have any? Ms. Hardy?
So final request from Mr. Shields. Could we make sure this PowerPoint's uploaded? It's not in the meeting documents right now. I think we've committed to people to be transparent about changes. And overall, I think I'll just echo that clearly there's been a lot of give and take to kind of get to these terms, but overall, I think, majority of us feel that, you know, you guys are still the best team and the best proposal, and many of us are still excited about it. Thank you.
All right. Anything else? Thanks again. Thank you all, and we look forward to continuing our working relationships, so we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks. All right. Our next item is, I think, scheduling. Is that right? Is there any council requests, any scheduling requests? Vice Mayor?
Mr. Shields, could you put the Sunday series on the schedule?
Yes.
Thanks.
Any other sched, we do have a closed session proposed momentarily. Mr. Duncan?
We're still trying to work out a date for the economic committee to meet, and had to be canceled because of the weather last week, so we'll get back to you on that. I think the Mr. Mayor has agreed to being available for the Founder's Row ribbon cutting, groundbreaking on March 4th at 4:00. Is that correct?
Yes.
And Aldi is said to be opening on February 21st, first, at 7:50 a.m., so...
Really?
Put that on, put that on, if you can believe it, put that on your calendar, too.
I got it.
I'm trying to work out a grand opening for the Custard and Kins Shop, too, sometime, maybe the day before on Sunday, so stay tuned for that.
All right. Anything else? We want to read our motion for a closed session. Ms. Hardy, you had something you wanted to say.
I just wanted to say thank you to Mr. Shields for scheduling the exotic animals in, I think it was March? There were two dates in March. I saw it, work session, and then the vote. Do we want our advocates for the change of, I guess it's called Project Prickles, to come to work session? I know we've heard a lot from students and other proponents of this change, but I know that we were looking at staff at driving the majority of this, but I want to see whether we wanted to invite Isabel.
Well, we would certainly let... Well, we would certainly, uh, let them know, and we can do that outreach, um, and, um, you know, we would do that for anyone who's contacted us on an item of interest, so, um, that would be our intention.
Okay. I just didn't know who we were looking for to present the pro side, and then the anti-side.
Right.
Yeah, I'm not sure having individuals come and kind of present their side, we'll have a public hearing on it the following week, or whenever it might be, so I've, I've looked forward to them speaking their mind at that time, but I'm not sure, I think we've got enough information without having the students necessarily come to the work session.
Just a question that came from the students, I think I just wanted to be able to get back to them of which meeting they should come to, and...
Well, probably both of them, if they're interested. I mean, they could hear our discussion at the work session, actually participate in the meeting at a regular session, these, that's my idea. Yeah?
Uh, thanks. For those of you that are more versed on state politics, just give me what's happened with the governor, and then also the lieutenant governor. Uh, anything that went into our legislative agenda? If, if we find out that our governor resigns, uh, if there's an issue with the lieutenant governor, I've heard some conversations about how there's a tie-break in terms of voting. Uh, again, I'm not the most versed on state politics, but is there anything related to our legislative agenda which is at risk because of what is happening right now? Anybody speak to that? Or is that a much bigger conversation? That's not a just couple...
You're running quickly.
Okay. Nobody wants to throw anything out there? You know what?
Yes.
Yeah, I'll buy Wyatt a beer, and we'll sit down, it's...
Go check out what you had in your yearbook.
All right. Mr. Shields, I want you to go.
Just one thing, uh, if I can, oh, yes, just to make sure the public is aware, that the staff is aware, that, uh, one of the new businesses down at the West End Shopping Center, behind the bike bridge, has taken it to themselves to post two banners and 12-yard signs in the, uh, planting area next to the sidewalk. It looks like south of the border, all condensed into, you know, wall drug, I mean, it is frightful. Uh, and, you know, I've let staff know about this, and I trust that, I, they've got to be violating some sign ordinance of some sort. Plus, then the dumpsters in the back have also sprouted a television and a toilet, so now all we need is like a hot tub, and we'll have a...
Fridge.
A fridge, I don't know what's, anyway, that shopping center is in need of attention, and the manager assures me that we're on the case, so I just want the public to be aware of that. Thank you.
All right. Unless there's anything else, let's move on to our closed session. Upon a motion made by council member...
Connolly.
Seconded by council member...
Duncan.
All right, and passed by vote of city council. Council went in a closed session pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A3 for the discussion or consideration of the acquisition of real property for a public purpose, or the disposition of publicly held real property, where discussion in open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body, public property yard lease negotiations. Councilman Connolly?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
Hardy?
Yes.
Lichtenhouse?
Yep.
Snyder?
Yes.
Z?
Yes.
Tarter?
Yep.
All right, why don't we give it a couple-minute break, let the cameras come down, and we'll reconvene in minutes.
This will be very brief.
All right, let's do it. All right. Let's, let's, uh, let's go back into open session and call it a night. Upon a motion made by council member...
Hardy.
All right, seconded by council member...
Connolly.
Connolly. And passed by a vote of city council, council reconvened in open session. Councilmember Connolly?
Yes.